Good evening. We are here today for a committee, council committee of the whole for a presentation by representatives of the engineering firm LJB on schematic designs, recommendations for downtown safety, streetscape and utilities improvement project for the recommendation by council for the final project design. Turn it over to Mr. Tidderington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this has been a project that's been going on for a couple of years now. And LJB as the lead engineering design firm along with Garmin Miller, MKSK, Woolport, I believe I didn't miss anybody. It is a collective. And council had authorized their firm to do the conceptual design, some public outreach that we've had on several occasions now. And then, subject to what you decide tonight, they would finish detailed designs and then come back to you with a bid, request for bid authorization, the staff would. And their contract would then also include construction management. Tonight, Dan Hoying, who's one of the leads from LJB, will make a presentation. That presentation, as you might recall, follows council's input on the, on Proudie Plaza. Just as a precursor, anything that you see here, it won't have the detailed design of Proudie Plaza in it, but please note that that is being incorporated into the overall plan and will be part of the next step, which is the detailed design. So I'd ask Dan to kick it off.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Tidderington. We have good audio? You can hear, you can hear, okay? Everybody in the room can hear me okay? Okay, great.
You got a light on?
The light is on, yes, it's green.
And your lights.
Okay, great. And so just by way of introduction, my name is Dan Hoying. I'm a project manager with LJB and I'm leading the team along with folks from the city. We have here on this slide, just as an introduction, the team from the city of Troy. Stan is our project manager and the rest of the team there. And then on the consultant team, myself and Matt Gardner are serving as the project managers for LJB. We have Kevin Dickey with us tonight of MKSK. And Kevin will be up here and join me for part of the presentation. Judge Rohr with Garmin Miller is doing the electrical design. And then Troy resident Nate Pitcher, who's also in the audience, at least briefly tonight, is working on the drainage components of the project. And as was mentioned, this is the third presentation. We gave a presentation back in April of '24 and then again in May of '24 in the Bravo Room. And so some of those slides, if you were able to participate in any of those meetings, some of those slides will be repeat. But for those of you that may not have been able to, we want to provide enough of the background and context into that situation as we move into the schematic design phase. So in general, the scope of this project is the reconstruction of failing curbs, sidewalk and utility infrastructure. We want to make sure that we're, it's serving as a continuation of the West Main Street project as it carries down into the downtown square. And what you see on this slide is the outline, if I use the pointer here, that blue outline that you see around, that's our project limits. So it's going from Cherry Street to Mulberry on the east and from Franklin Street to Water Street at the north and including obviously the square. And the reconstruction of those curbs and the utility infrastructure is a point of emphasis. Looking at it from a primary goal standpoint in that infrastructure improvement, we want to make sure that we're improving pedestrian safety. We want to maintain the vibrancy of downtown and continue to build on that. Was able to watch most of the presentation from the pod design a couple of weeks ago. And we want to certainly incorporate the vibrancy that they're planning into our work as well and make sure that each of the quadrants works in that way as you look to maintain downtown. There's some aging infrastructure and primarily on the water side, water, underground water lines, just a great opportunity here to upgrade that infrastructure that's reached its useful life. And then stormwater improvements as well to review the drainage. Part of our goals throughout, I mentioned this is the third public meeting, really wanted to engage local stakeholders, city council, members of the public into this process and collect that feedback. I've got a slide later that kind of highlights what some of those changes have been. If you were a part of that prior process, we've incorporated a number of those changes and want to highlight some of those. So here's some just existing conditions, pictures. You can see that the curbs have fallen in some places where the sidewalk, we get exposed trip hazards right at the intersections. We have some locations where there are park benches that are sitting kind of out on the corners, right at the square. And obviously during a wet time, some of those puddles take a little longer to come away than others, as well as here in the crosswalks, right? So there's obviously some drainage infrastructure that we'd like to improve within this project as well as just the age and the condition of some of the infrastructure that's there throughout the square and each of those adjacent blocks. Another picture, just acknowledging that we have vehicles of all sizes. We have the semi trailer here in the corner. Obviously at certain times of the day, if you were outside at five o'clock today, just like probably most, five o'clock, right? It backs up, we understand that that congestion will back up. And so we wanted to make sure we were taking a true infrastructure look at this project when we got started. And then looking down from the top, you see this picture is oriented and we tried on most of our aerial views just for orientation. North is technically like up to the top left, but this is Proudie Plaza here and then what we'll call the northwest quadrant. We kind of orient the Market Street going north, that's the cardinal north direction for our project purposes. One of the first things that we do when we're looking into replacing of infrastructure is making sure that it works for the intended uses. Obviously anytime we're involving the roadway, we want to make sure that that can be done safely and that it matches the current design expectations of the drivers. As things change in our society, we have updated expectations and we want to make sure that it's working appropriately. I know that the square itself has seen a number of those renovations over the years. And so that turning movements and the circulating roadway was the primary focus for our initial investigation. And then we're looking at the capacity analysis of various alternatives. The team at Woolport with Nate and the folks at LJB collaborated on that evaluation to understand what the impacts of any design changes may be to the roadways. And we wanted to make sure that we were enhancing a lot of the pedestrian safety challenges that people experience today. If you think about those crosswalks that are out there now, there's a decent amount, they're very close to the circulating roadway. So as you exit the roundabout, you're immediately met with those crosswalk lines in those locations presenting just another decision point for the driver and another decision point for each of the pedestrians as they're looking to make those crossings. Some of the crosswalks today, in fact, most of the crosswalks today are technically across two lanes worth of pavement in the 20 to 24 foot length. That takes more time for people to plan that route as many of those right turn lanes that are on each of the entering legs opens up right as you're at the crosswalk. So those crosswalks are fairly long for this type of environment. And then some of the temporary improvements that have been recommended through the years and implemented, like these planters, where you really have vertical obstacles for, or vertical markers for vehicles, right? It's providing that level of pedestrian comfort and safety while you're standing there in that refuge area going between them. Our goal was to really make those more permanent because we really like the safety benefits that those bring. We want to make sure that that's something that is there in the new design and accommodated in the new design. So the proposed improvements, as we came through that analysis, some of the things that we've recommended is converting the traffic circle to a modern roundabout. And I've got pictures of this that I'll show you in just a minute. But what I mean by that is really reducing the outer diameter of the circulating roadway by introducing a truck apron. The roundabout today with that vertical wall curb that's there is wide enough for a semi trailer to operate. It's really designed to accommodate a semi trailer or tractor trailer or large farm machinery. We want to design it for the smaller vehicles, for the cars, but still we have to make sure that we're accommodating tractor trailers, the larger vehicles. And so what that does for us is it helps to narrow the pavement. First, it helps us control speeds and can make sure that we're not getting large, larger radius turning movements, which people can make faster. And then it just makes sure that the outside space can then be reallocated to better allocate that space to public use. And I'll show more about that in just a second. We want to refresh and enhance the landscaping that's there in the center. We want to make sure that we were not disturbing that center concept, but give it a face, you know, a refresh and make that more modern, maintain the flagpole and the fountain. Certainly no impacts to those, those are some of our constraints. We want to make sure we aren't touching anything inside that center circle, inside that center concrete area where the fountain operates and the tree will sit and those things in the winter. And then improving the pedestrian safety, we were able to include that with raised islands at the crosswalks that's in the center of the pavement where those planters were sitting. We're reducing those crossing lengths and then separating the conflict points by moving the vehicles farther away from those crosswalks. So this is a rendering of the proposed design and this is standing in the southeast quadrant looking to the northwest. And so what you see is that if you were to compare today, this roundabout that's drawn here to today's, this curb on the outside is the large barrier curb that's out there today. That's the single curb line that's there. So from a vehicle standpoint, you're driving in your car, the path, the smallest path that you could take is still this same radius. The difference in the design is that we've moved that wall curb from here into the inside where these light, where this light pole area is. And so that higher wall type curb is now there. And this brick pattern that's shown here is now the truck apron. So there's a couple inch curb that's right here on this lip that's uncomfortable for us if we're driving in our cars, but is traversable by trucks if they need to pull their trailers across that. They will still operate within the lane, right? It's a single lane roundabout maintaining that consistent pattern that's there today and it's consistent on all four legs. So it's the same traffic operation, we're just pulling everything into the center slightly to accommodate that. And the rendering that you see, obviously we've not touched the fountain and we've, and the landscaping is, the concept is being maintained here in that same plan. The other thing that you can tell from here while I'm on it is that the distance between the crosswalks, right? So the circulating roadway, all the vehicles that are turning are here. If you, so if you're, if this truck, we're going to make a continue and go on West Main, this truck will stay in this lane. And so a pedestrian that's looking to cross here has additional depth and additional distance to be able to make that decision on, hey, if I can cross this gap, or I can find this gap. And this vehicle is not looking to, they're further away from the decision they just made on, am I entering this roundabout or am I going to continue on the way?
There's one thing you need to change right now. Back to your picture.
Oh, okay. I'm going to try.
Your arrows are wrong.
There we go.
Between the black and white car and over by Agave and Ride, you don't want them turning left either way.
Well, not the white car, but the black car.
The black car.
What is that? See how it's going left and right?
Or you had your pointer before.
Up over here?
No, that one.
Up over here?
You don't want them turning left.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so.
You got your arrows back.
Going left this way or?
Yeah, so the comment is, I guess for the benefit of the recording, it didn't come through, questions about the left turn arrows that we have shown here. I agree with you on the placement of these arrows. These arrows are for that concept reason. But what we're really intending there is if I use the same version up in this quadrant is that this is a right turn only lane that has opened up and that vehicle's a right only. And if you want to make a left or through, you will continue into this lane and go straight. So you're absolutely right, that we're not going to allow anybody to make this left here, right? That's, roundabout, roundabout operation, we'll make sure that that is the case. But that's the intention of these arrows. And so as we look at the final design and the placement of this marker, if you're making a southbound through or a southbound left movement, you'll be in this lane and the left turn will look like coming around and then exiting the roundabout that way.
Yes. You can move on.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the question. I mentioned the public, the public involvement process. Some of the things, the highlights that have changed, if you've seen this version in the past, some of the elements that we heard from the public and from members of council that have been able to attend and from the other stakeholders, was some of the odd arrangements. We were using a hybrid roundabout in those prior designs that included a second through lane on the east side of the roundabout to increase northbound traffic capacity. We've made the change back to the consistent similar vehicular patterns, so it's a normal single lane roundabout. Operates just like the other single lane roundabouts that are in town now or will be in town in the future. It's a very consistent pattern, not only to what drivers expect in an area, but what they've experienced here and it's the same in each of the four quadrants. So that's probably the primary roadway function that's been improved. The other question, the other comment is we heard a lot about the revised, the West Main Street approach, especially as you're entering the roundabout heading eastbound, but on the west side of the intersection. There was, there is today a dual lane, a full dual lane approach. And we were maintaining that in our previous versions of the presentation. We've made that modification and we recognize that that improves the pedestrian safety by maintaining all single lane crosswalks. So as we look at that final design, each of those crosswalks has been reduced from a 20 to 24 foot to closer to 12 to 16 feet of really just a single lane crossing within that roundabout. So every pedestrian will have a shorter distance to be able to get to those refuge islands or then get to safety behind the curb.
Did you change the parking on that area of the street then too?
Yes. The question about changing the parking in that area of the street, I'm going to say in the first block west of the square on the south side is today parallel parking.
Correct.
In our parking counts and in our numbers, we are accounting for that to be returned to a head in angle parking. Yeah. The increase is our number, we're then able to use that lane that's there today. And really.
We'll get more parking with the one.
Yes. And I will come back to the parking. That will increase our, the parking capacity in that block, yes. And really if you, as you operate that, as the West Main Street project has come online, that maintains a consistent approach. We were, we were opening that second lane just for that one block to get into the turn. And so there is a little bit of capacity issue there, you know, reduction in that capacity, but it's relatively minor and certainly for the benefit of the pedestrian safety, we're recommending going to the single lane and increasing the number of parking spaces. We also hope that this improves the business access in the public use spaces by increasing the outdoor gathering spaces in those more desirable areas. Today, there's, if there's any space that's kind of in the public, it's in the center of that roundabout, very difficult, questionable whether you should access that or not. We want to make sure that we're giving as much of that to the, back to the public, whether that's for business use or whether that's for other recreational uses or just, you know, open public pedestrian space. That's a much better, much better allocation, we feel, for that. By improving the business access, we're maintaining the same general allocation of those, the entrances to each of the quadrants. But when you see the new, the parking concept, we're able to eliminate those spaces that if you pull into the first one today and you back out, the backside of your vehicle may very well be in the through lane coming out of that roundabout, exiting that roundabout. And so we're giving you additional space there as well with some of the parking configuration to improve access and maintain as much business viability downtown certainly as possible. That's a major part of the vibrancy. We want to make sure we're emphasizing that as much as possible. Okay. The proposed quadrant improvements. I'm going to start right off with the one that's still in process and lead with the loss of three on-street spaces in the downtown area. And I'm going to describe this for you in terms of that whole quadrant. If you were to take that big block from Cherry Street to Mulberry and Franklin Street to Water and you use all of the spaces that are in there, that's the area that we needed to look at from an ADA compliance standpoint. Do we have enough ADA compliant spaces? We are today showing a reduction in total of three spaces. 280 is what we counted as the existing. We're proposing 277. But that trade-off is coming with the benefit of maintaining an accessible space in each of the quadrants. They're not necessarily required. We can allocate those to other locations. But we're applying those now inside those quadrant parking areas to maintain maximum availability for those spaces. They're there today, we wanted to make sure that we are honoring that and maintaining it. There is the increase, as gentlemen asked, there was the increase in spaces with the angle parking on West Main. So we're adding a few of those back. And the real benefit, if you have a normal sized vehicle, not a compact car, your accessibility to parking has actually increased because in each of the quadrants, I believe that there's restrictions on compact car parking only, at least two spaces in the north quadrant in front of Agave and Ride, I believe. And I expect that that's the case in many of the others. And it's site distance related. That was a safety decision that was made at the time on concurrent configuration. With the proposed improvements, we can remove those. So if you drive a normal sized, non-compact car, a normal vehicle, the availability to view to park there is actually increased. But in all reality, I wanted to be very transparent, we're showing today three, a reduction in three. The parking lot increase, when we see it on the aerial, we're really emphasizing that, putting the emphasis in the quadrants on the gathering space. If you're parking there today, you're kind of parked towards the, toward the buildings or toward the outside. The parking areas have been reconfigured to really focus people's attention in that space into those more public areas, hopefully to increase that visibility. But it was very important that we maintain the ability for deliveries to be, to be made, that we can still get full sized vehicles in and out and cover all that entire space. The area that's available for pedestrian and public space, I mentioned that that increased and some of those are improved sidewalks. We've got enhanced outdoor dining capabilities that I heard a little bit about in the pod design presentation on the 24th. And additional opportunities for gathering spaces, there's of course the landscaping and other public amenities that are included there as well. So this is an aerial view, looking down on the same, again, north being up. And so this just kind of lays out for you what that looks like. As I mentioned, on the parking configurations, you can tell that we've got that arced arrangement. And so as you enter in on this spot, they remain one-way operation, but you enter in here, then you, each of these parking areas are kind of arced, looking towards the center or looking towards, towards the middle here into those new quadrants. And you can see on the aerial view that we're maintaining those consistent single lanes. And so each of the quadrants remains the same. We wanted to also provide this slide more for context. I mentioned early that one of the goals was to extend that West Main Street project and continue that through the downtown. And so as you look at it from the standpoint of what's, what's been done in front of the courthouse, we're maintaining that double banding as you get back to the one block out, right? There's a difference in the, the blocks right inside the public square. And then as you move away from that again, very similar as you go west, we're incorporating that same double banding of the sidewalks, trying to maintain that similar look and feel. And at this point, I'm remembering Kevin up to talk through some of the rendering options we've prepared for each of us.
Thank you. Afternoon.
All right. So as you saw in the, earlier, the master plan or the overall plan, we're treating all four quadrants, basically treating them as the same, not giving any differential treatment to any one particular quadrant other than what might be occurring up at Proudie Plaza. So the images I'm going to show you will be reflective in the two other, the three remaining quadrants. So with that in mind, as Dan explained, with the reconfiguration of the parking, that allows for more public space, more outdoor usable pedestrian space up against the buildings and within those, each of those individual quadrants, creating an environment for outdoor dining, for cafe space or just, you know, little pocket parts or individual spaces to kind of, to sit and enjoy, enjoy your day. So this, this quadrant here, this is the southeast quadrant, southwest quadrant, thank you. Each of these, and this, what I'm going to explain will apply to all of the quadrants. Beginning at the crosswalks themselves, to define that crosswalk, we're looking at using, almost creating an apron at that, at that crosswalk, using a, an actual clay brick with a clay pattern, patterns yet to, to be determined, but looking at a true clay brick. Using the clay bricks, it maintains its color, it doesn't fade, it's, it's, the color is through and through. So with that, looking at potential different clay patterns. Maintaining the three foot wide band at the back of curb, but then wrapping that band around that apron. So that would be a consistent color and then coming back within in that field of pavers having a blend of brick paper. As we work our way into the quadrant, imagine this. So looking at this, so imagine creating a picture frame around the entire quadrant. So with that, using specialty concrete pavement to establish that amenity zone up against the buildings and creating that on all four quadrants. So you're only, you're creating a frame around that quadrant. And enhancing that frame, we're also looking at street trees to create that, each individual quadrant and creating that frame. But within that frame at each corner is where we look at the specialty pavement, is where we create that space, that sense of, that, that space of, that sense of place. So back to the enlargement. So this pavement you see in the back is a specialty concrete pavement. Somewhat hard to determine up here on the screen, up on the screen, but looking at integral color with a buff wash concrete to provide, defining that space, creating that potential for outdoor dining, cafe space. But then as we move closer to the, to the parking areas, the more the vehicular oriented, we'd look at reverting back to just a standard concrete to help define, again, pedestrian versus vehicular space. Also helping to define that space illuminated bollards. And again, this is helping to create that framework for the entire quadrant. So, you know, mirroring this on all four quadrants. And these would be illuminated to provide that ambiance, that glow, you know, as, you know, as after hours. And each of these trees within that frame would have a uplighting as well to help create that glow and create that frame. As we move back into the corner or into the quadrant, you, you can see that we are looking at tree grates at each of the base of those trees to help create a traversable surface. But as we move back into the quadrant itself, we are defining that with a low seat wall. Actually, it's a bench. So the wall in the foreground might be thigh high, 30 inches tall to create a visual separation from the parking. But then within that, there'd be a seat level, a secondary level for seating. And then as we move beyond into that, more of the dining space with individual tables and chairs and umbrellas. So this is an interior of what that might look like. This is the northeast quadrant. And you can see kind of 30 inch tall, almost stream wall, and then introducing a seat wall on the interior. Looking at that, a limestone cap on the wall itself, but, but to soften that experience, coming in with like a wood, wood inlay to help create that softer feeling there. But you can see brick pavers, integral color concrete defining that space. And then you can see here, as you move out towards the vehicular space where we look, where we move back to the standard concrete. This quadrant here, we have more depth. So we've defined this interior space with the two flanking walls, but then punching out and to kind of create an entry here, punching out with a third wall to help define that, again, that separation. Please, Dan, or? Believe, any questions before I move on?
Yeah, basically, just one that was submitted.
Concrete and everything, are we going to be smooth? Is it going to be bumpy? Because the people that sent the question in are concerned if they use their walkers and safety and all that stuff.
Of course, yeah. Every pavement here would clearly would be ADA accessible, be ADA accessible. The concrete, when I say the exposed aggregate or buff wash, it's a very, very fine finish, very, almost like a sandpaper type of appearance. So very, very fine finish. The pavers themselves, again, standard pedestrian ADA compliant pavers, very smooth finish with, with that in mind.
Please come to the microphone so everybody can hear you. We had problems last time of not hearing the question.
My name is Jeff Schilling. I'm a member of city council. And on the seating walls, if you can get it back to that picture, I've had a couple of questions on that.
Yes.
Okay. Several years ago, our library in their front entrance had walls very similar to that leading down from the entrance to the library down to the sidewalk. And then those walls were very quickly abused, used and abused by our skateboarding community. And so I'm looking at this thing saying, well, you know, there it is. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, so, I mean, especially maybe not that 30, I'm certain that some of those skateboarders could jump up onto that 30 inch wall with no problem. But the one that I see there is that seat area that's like 24, 28 inches there. And I mean, that's just like zoom and they're gone, you know, types of things. So what do you do, what do you do to present, prevent that?
I had a sense that you were going that way. It is an issue we run into all the time. So yeah, the 30 inch wall height, I'm not a skateboarder, but maybe it's possible. There's, there's plugs, there's skate deterrents that we could use. You could either carve it into the limestone cap at the joint, the joint spacing, or there's. You could either carve it into the limestone cap at the joint, the joint spacing, or there's stainless steel plugs that you insert into the cap itself that, you know, you place those three feet on center. So it doesn't allow for any speed to pick up. This bench here, that would be a wood bench, wood slat bench. Again, if that's not enough, that's still escapable. Again, you could use the plugs within there. I've seen to the points where you can actually introduce armrests as well, you did, you know, every three feet on center. So there are solutions.
Okay. I'd be interested to see how that design comes out, because I know, you know, I know it would happen again. And that's, I mean, that's.
And it's, yeah, that's a very common question, and yeah.
And then can we go back to the crosswalks? I did have another question about that. In doing the crosswalks, there's been a lot of interest by the public in, you know, yeah, right there, is to have one of these big school sign things that we use in our, by our schools to designate crosswalks. They can, they could hit a, the way the kids use it, they hit a button and then this thing lights up. And I think that would be an ideal addition, because again, I hate to say this, but Ohio drivers are not used to yielding to pedestrians. We didn't grow up that way. And I think that the, when you're downtown, you know, you have to be especially careful because the large majority of drivers downtown, being from Ohio, they don't know how to yield to pedestrians. And so we need that light, we need those crosswalk lights like you have by the schools so that it's big and bright and, you know, it's blinking and this type of thing so that, you know, as you're ready to cross, you hit that button and then this thing lights up like a Christmas tree. So I think that we need to, we haven't, I know we've talked about this before, but I think that we need to add that as a safety feature for all the crosswalks in the square.
Regarding, those are called RFBs, I believe if I understand right, the rectangular rapid flashing beacon. You push the button and they light up, right, the big signs. And an issue with use of those in an area where we anticipate really high volume pedestrians is that the compliance with them will become less and less in that situation. We definitely recommend it in locations where there's lower volume and lower frequency of use. Because in this case, they'll flash for a certain period of time and the pedestrians will already been through it, and drivers become accustomed to going through it while it's still flashing, which is really what we want from a capacity standpoint and a throughput. In this case, what we're trying to do from a pedestrian safety standpoint is limit that crossing distance so it's really only, you know, 12 feet, 15 feet as you get across there and can step off. And you're only looking in one direction. So I know that the city today has looked left on the pavement so that you're looking in that direction, and then as you get into the median, you're then again looking to the right, you know, and they're kind of helping you in that process. Something along those lines would be a way that we would want to increase that. But certainly from a pedestrian standpoint, yes, you have the right of way. We encourage that eye contact with the driver before you get out there if there's someone coming. Because the compliance as the volume goes up.
The more times that button gets pushed, the less people tend to follow it. So that's.
It works very well in our schools, I'd like to say that.
Yeah, I appreciate the comment. It's certainly something we'll continue to look into. It's not something that we've, you know, dismissed. It's just, as we're looking at it there, we see that it's not the ideal application for that particular treatment.
I do want to point out, so the brick, the brick, because we detail that too, we pull some of the details from some of the surrounding architecture, you know, some very beautiful buildings. So any of the brick that we're proposing, we look and pull that same detail from some of the surrounding buildings, really tie this entire area together. Obviously, Proudly Plaza, I understand, you know, the direction that's going. So what we've shown, we've not incorporated that yet, but we have all intentions of working with Pod and that design to bring these two together and make that marriage.
But the parking would be similar for that quadrant. We, in the Pod Design, they still had the parking the same as the other part.
Yes. You can see, yeah, you can see, we've somewhat screened it out, but yes, anything back in front of the curb parking would remain the same. So we'll flip through some of these, just, these were presented in some of the earlier concepts, just some of the ideas of, you know, to enhance that outdoor dining area. We would maintain the current three outdoor dining locations, and that's one of the reasons we're going with that standard, with the integral color, to allow for the current outdoor dining and any future potential outdoor dining, so not truly defining it, but just establishing a zone for that outdoor dining. Seat walls, looking at the brick, but again, we would pull brick from some of the architecture surrounding the quadrant. And just, again, just helping to define some programmable space, you know, outdoor dining, overhead lighting, outdoor activity.
Moving to some of the other improvements, we talked about the utility upgrades, the underground utility, water line replacements and upgrades there for age, as well as stormwater drainage reconfiguration, where we're changing some of the shape of those parking fields. So drainage will need to be updated to accommodate that as well. In the electrical, we want to make sure that we're, we are providing, planning to provide these kiosks that are wayfinding and messaging to share some of the programming that may be going on downtown. Those will be provided in those quadrants. We're doing a refresh on the lighting throughout, and then we want to make sure that we're accommodating for festivals. So certainly the electrical functions at each of the trees so that we can maintain the lights that are there, or Christmas lights, holiday lights that are included in that space, as well as any of the hookups for when you've got tents or festivals and the vendors that are down there using that space. All of that work is included. Kevin mentioned some of the bollards that were there, the illuminated bollards actually on the backside, right, are much as he mentioned about the ambiance and the separation of the spaces. We do recognize that this area is occasionally blocked off, whether that be entirely in the entire downtown core, or if it's in a single quadrant. And so as we're looking to that, combinations of probably like a yellow bollard that may be across the street, removable certainly, but in a way that can be used to safely secure large crowds that may be downtown and prevent people from coming through there. And then something maybe more like the stainless bollards or these bollards here, that would be then kind of intermixed throughout. So obviously, those are just concepts, but planned in their full implementation to be safe, not allow vehicles through, and provide that crowd protection in addition to doing the offsetting of the space during everyday operation. So I'll get a little bit about the schedule. The next, the next time to really come forward, the next action from the council would be council's bid authorization request. We anticipate that later this summer, in August of '25. The underground works and that utility work, we would like to get started in this fall, in October, and have that wrapped up by May. So you see the utility construction start at the bottom and ending in May. We want to make sure that May of '26 through like the fall of '26, that there's no work downtown. So we would have that all cleaned and the contractors moved out. You go away, basically return to that work done with the utility, mostly underground utility done. And then we would start construction again with the streetscape construction, starting in the fall of '26, anticipating that that would be a two-season, or parts of two-season construction, fall of '26, as well as the fall, through the fall of '27, with that completion of the project. Here's some of those highlights, bullets on the slides are basically the words we just talked about. No work during the late spring and early summer of '26. And then anticipating that we would use a phased construction of the improvements, limiting the work to more than two of the quadrants at a time. It's really to maintain that access to parking right downtown in the square. Obviously, successful little bit contractors input in that will work to solicit that input as we finalize, finish our final design and work on a phasing plan for what that will look like over the next few months. But that's the current plan as I stand here today. So a lot of these improvements are adjacent to private property. We wanted to hit on this, on the assessments portion of this again. Property owner costs, buildings and property owners downtown would be assessed only for a new plain concrete sidewalk work. So items that would be in the work limits needed for the business themselves. So access doors or vents would also be assessed if those were necessary as part of the project, if they were included inside the sidewalk and inside the work limits. I wanted to note that we understand that many of the buildings downtown could use a fire service upgrade, and that this, while the street is open, may be a great time to do that. And so the city and Stan, I think, is in the process of coordinating what were, a voluntary fire service line that could be installed with the project, but at the cost of the property owner. And so that's being, that work is being done now to coordinate that, give property owners the option to make that upgrade at this time, while, with the project so that it's done all at the same time. And then any remaining items and upgrades that are in that area would not be assessed to the property owner, they would, they would be borne by the city's cost. So in summary, we talked about pedestrian safety and wanting to make sure we're improving that from a goal standpoint. Operating safe and efficient traffic operations makes, to design it and scale it for the passenger vehicle, we really want to encourage downtown while still accommodating those larger vehicles. We're going to replace the underground utilities, and we want to limit that changes in parking in that downtown core as much as possible, while still providing access that exists today. From a cost standpoint, the schematic design costs, you see the breakdowns here for streetscape and landscaping, the utilities, the electric and lighting work, and then the safety improvements and the paving cost, bringing the total cost to $9.8 million. So that's, those are the presentations, the comments, or the prepared remarks. We have also, I want to make sure that you guys all have access to this, or folks that may be watching this later have the access. That QR code will take you to the city's website that has all of the project information on there. It also, I believe, has the design for Proudly Plaza, that presentation that was there from the 24th, is linked there as well. I would expect that this presentation will be there as well at some point. But on the bottom, for project-specific questions and information, there is a independent email address, you email streetscape@troyohioh.gov. Those project questions will come to us as well. It's all on behalf of Stan, Matt, myself, Kevin. Thanks for your time tonight, and I think we're open to open to questions.
Before we get to that, I want to drill down on a, drill into a little bit on the, Dan, can you pass that over there, one of these? The cost. But before I get into the cost, I want to revisit the comments related to sprinklers. We see this as an opportunity for property owners who might be interested to upgrade at least the availability, the future build-out, an installation of sprinklers. And so what better time to do that but when the road is open and we're upgrading and upsizing, upsizing the water lines? What we have, you know, it's totally optional on the part of the property owners, but to assist in not only that, but in other downtown-related infrastructure, property improvements. We have been talking with one of our local funders about possibly creating a special revolving loan fund in addition to the small business and the CDBG funds that we have that would be specifically earmarked towards downtown. Things such as sprinklers, or maybe adding an elevator or access to the upper floors in some of the buildings, you know, that is a sticking point with them. It could involve facades. Not sure if that, you know, seed money is going to be forthcoming. We only had that conversation at the end of last week, and so we're still kind of developing some options. But in the meantime, you know, we have been reaching out to property owners to see if there's any interest on the part of those that don't have sprinklers. Because even if they don't put sprinklers in now, as Mrs. Westfall might know, in a building that was formerly owned by four sons, that just getting water taps, I think in that, in that case, they had to go clear across the street, that asphalt is very thick, it was not a very cheap endeavor. And so at least getting service lines tapped out to, in front of the property, if not inside the building, is, it would be a lot more cost-effectively to do it now. Again, that's totally optional on the part of the property owner. Some property owners, even downtown, will be able to take advantage of that, but we're not going to be opening up waterline, you know, and doing waterline installations in the entire area. So it's something that we will look at as part of the detailed design. I did pass out, just to give you an idea of the different cost items, broke it down between the three priorities, that being the safety, the streetscapes, and the utilities. And I want to go back to the KZF conversation back in 2022. I think most of you were involved, participated in that, maybe all of you. And, and, you know, maybe you can recall that we had several, sure, I think there's some extra ones here too. Did everybody else get, Todd doesn't seem like he's interested. Okay. All right. I apologize. And so back when KZF made their preliminary presentation, they gave us a low, medium, and high-cost estimate. Those estimates were tied to the amount of improvements that we wanted to make. As we moved forward in the process, it became clear that the option that, at least in concept, KZF was presenting back then was the high option, kind of a hybrid, because we did not incorporate everything that they had talked about, again, in the high-level concept. But things like enhanced Proudly Plaza with no permanent stage, kiosks, the interactive kiosks, and the related electric, public spaces in all four of the quads, and not just in Proudly Plaza, as well as the safety bollards, those were all part of KZF's high-end estimate. The utilities, we talked about those in concept, only that in 2022, that we were going to continue to look at what the needs were out there. So those were not included in any of KZF's cost estimates, and that's why I broke those out separately. So when I isolated on even the enhanced Proudly Plaza plan, redesign plan that we looked at at the end of February, if you look at the safety and the streetscape features, these estimates in 2025, which include some inflation factor that ODOT helps us calculate, as well as a, oh, that would be Mr. Phillips, as well as a contingency. If you look at KZF's high estimate, including 10% premium per year, which is, which seems exorbitantly high, but in the last three years, that's about what's happened to us, as is evidenced from all the times that we've had to come back and get adjustments to our original estimates on other projects. If you look at the two right-hand columns, 2025 estimated costs for the safety and streetscape parts of the project were five, a little less than 5.3 million. They were about 5.5 million in KZS's estimates, KZF's estimates. And then you add the utilities to it, and that's where you're getting, as well as the contractor overhead, that's where you're getting the numbers that you see. On the other side, we do, I did try to break down where some of the resources would come from, primarily out of the general fund, which is what we had estimated in the capital plan. But water and storm is a significant part of this project for obvious reasons. And then we do have access to ODOT's urban paving program, which would help with the overlay once we repair the street after the project is done. These are, you know, benchmark estimates. Of course, who knows what a bidding atmosphere might look like, but this is as good as we've got right now. And until the detailed design is done and we bring back a recommendation for bidding, you know, there's still some more work to be done at the engineering and design work.
Okay. Maybe just make it simplest, we'll just go around, if you've got questions. Maybe just make it simplest, we'll just go around, if you've got questions right now on round one, and if you're thinking one later, we'll come back, and we'll start with Mrs. Snee.
Just a quick question about the bollards. I don't know if you can put back up the picture of the quadrant.
Picture of the quadrant.
Just how the quadrant, I was going to look with the parking.
Keep going.
Yeah.
I'll go back, yeah.
This one?
One more back with the parking. There you go.
Yes.
So obviously, the bollards are out here on the exterior parking, I guess I would call it.
Rear parking, I guess I would call it.
And then partially in, would there be any bollards on that, in, in front of those inward-facing cars, or are you depending on planners and landscaping to kind of be the barrier?
In this space?
And a curb, I know, but yes, in that space.
Yeah, our, our current design would account for the curb.
Okay.
At that place to, to really provide that barrier. As we look at it from, so as Kevin mentioned, right, these are the illuminated bollards here. They're helping to define the space, but once you get to the parking, you've really got the curb that, that you're pulling up to. From a security and safety perspective, we look at that being, you know, out in this, this quadrant instead, right, out, out on the perimeter of the, of the quadrant.
Okay. And then there would be temporary placement along, like where that vehicle's turning in if you wanted to close off the quadrant?
Here, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Close it off here with the temporary.
Here, as well as there, right? If, if we were closing just a single quadrant, and, or if we were closing the quadrant and leaving the roadway open.
Okay.
But we would also, temporary bollard spaces for intersections as we move out.
That was going to be my next question.
In addition, and Kevin's point, that he just wanted me to remind, wanted me to remind, there are, the walls are right here also, right?
Right.
So from a, from a, people that are seated and that kind of security, you're separated from the entire vehicular movements by those walls as well.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, that was all I had to say.
Mr. Witt?
I'll reserve my question for now.
Okay. Mrs. Marshall?
I just want to make sure that I did hear you correctly, like Herons and Agathe Wright, they will be able to maintain their outdoor seating, that's, okay. And then as far as the traffic pattern that is there now, it's, it is going to remain the same except for the removal of the one where the parking is parallel, right?
Yes, correct. The, the operation of the roundabout will be exactly the same. The operation of the approach, approaching streets will remain the same with the exception of the west main street leg that will be single lane all the way up and into the crosswalks. So yes, the location, that is the other change, is that each of those right turn lanes today opens on top of that crosswalk. So it's taken much wider, and we're going to hold that lane opening until you get through the crosswalk, so it's just a single lane crosswalk.
Mrs. Westfall?
Are the exterior bollards lit also?
Yeah, no, we are, no, we are, no, the, the, we are not anticipating to have illuminated bollards on the exterior.
And that's because those will be removable? So that, that'll be storage and as we, if you remember back when we talked several times, but starting with KZF, I think KZF's, a preliminary picture had a lot of bollards all over, and council said, that's a little overwhelming, we'd like you to not store all the bollards onsite and in the downtown. But, so we plan on storing some of those offsite when we don't need them to close different sections of, of the downtown. Part of the storage, part of the decorative look will, will be along each of the quads in that front, that little island in the front. So, I mean, you can't have them lit and then temporarily, you know, be able to move them.
Okay. And, and there won't be any trees on that exterior? The trees will all be towards the corners?
Yes, that is the current plan as well.
Okay. And then I have another concern. I know, I know Patrick.
Crosswalks. But my concern is currently we have, they tried the constantly flashing lights, you know, look left, look right, and people ignored it. And it works great behind the hospital. The lights don't stay on that long. I drive it every day, people hit it, they cross, they go off. And I've been in many, many cities where you hit a button, traffic stops, and people cross. I don't know why that's such a difficult concept to incorporate.
The, the mechanics of incorporating it, it can be done here, right, there are, right, there are mechanic, certainly the incorporation of those RFB signs and the flashing lights can be incorporated there. But when you look into the research, the difference in what I understand about Water Street behind the hospital, or in this volume, where you see much less pedestrian traffic there, and I expect far less vehicular traffic there as well. And so as you get those increasing volumes, the compliance rates just go down. And at some point, you risk, I push the button and I'm still on my phone, walking, walking across, and that's the concern. That's, that's where these elements, when you're looking at it from a pedestrian safety perspective, try to find the balance in what that research has shown us in other locations where they put them in. So we use them frequently, in fact, trying to think if we have them any that we've designed here, but that we certainly have them in, in other cities where it's a lower volume, both on the pedestrian volumes and a lower volume on the vehicular volumes as well.
And, and I, I get what you're saying, but what I've found and what people are telling me when they visit Troy is that, and I know bumping them out and making it smaller to cross is going to help, but that it's, it's not safe. Yeah, we have to look left, look right, but when there's groups of people crossing, a lot of times somebody sees somebody moving and they just start crossing the street, and the person driving is looking at the next light. How can I get through this and get to the next light? They're not looking at the crosswalks. So I feel like there's got to be some way to get drivers to look at the crosswalks.
We will, I, I would say, man, from a commitment standpoint, we want this to be as safe and efficient as possible, right? That's our, our mission as well. We want it to remain a vibrant place. We hope there's lots of pedestrians. We hope there's lots of slow-moving vehicles, right, slow-moving cars. Our current understanding and our current plan is to use that increased distance between the circulating road when you're exiting the roundabout, and now you've got a crosswalk environment that you're coming up to as a way to highlight that. And there are other ways that, from a street marking or other ways that we can really emphasize that crosswalk so that somebody in a, as a vehicle is looking and recognizing, okay, I am still in the downtown core, there's pedestrians all around, and I need to make sure I'm watching for those things. Our preliminary evaluation for the RFBs have suggested not to use them in this location for those reasons, but certainly there are other ways, and we will continue to work with the city engineering staff in the evaluation of, are the RFBs the right solution? Is there another way to really enhance that that will increase compliance rates, keep everybody safe? That's obviously the goal. All right, so I, I hear and appreciate. That's the concern, right? Rather than that being the exact solution, how, what are we doing to make sure we're increasing the safety of pedestrians and not just for their own account, that they didn't step out in front of somebody, but that the vehicles are expecting pedestrians to be there as well? Because it's, it's the best of both worlds downtown.
Can, I, I don't know if you've got a slider, if the slide adequately shows it on the overhead aerial, but can you talk a little bit, because we did have that discussion, and, and how we can make things safer throughout? Can you maybe point out, you know, how different the?
How different the, the center landing island is between, you know, between the lanes of traffic, as well as the bumpouts and how those are significantly enhanced?
Yeah, let's go to, I'm going to try to remember to go the right direction, it's going to go up to one of my, some of my existing pictures. So here's a good, here's a good aerial from a comparison standpoint. This obviously is the, here's the dual lane that we were talking about before, right, the dual lane crossing. But on each of the approaches, if you look here, you see how wide this location is, there's a bumped-out curb around the parking, but then there's still a two-lane crossing here where we have really only the planters providing any advanced refuge on, from either side. And so this is a relatively small object to, to provide that refuge. And if I go to one of the pictures, I think if I go up even a little farther, let's see, do I have?
Go back.
Yeah, the car's parked right in the front of it, there. Let's see if I can get to this, one of these crosswalk pictures. So just looking at this, this person crossing in the bike up here, right, we've got the crosswalk in two lanes, and then just this, this planner with this sign on it here, and the two planners on this side. As we look in, at the proposed condition, if I go back to that aerial, so the distance here from that, the right-turning vehicles and the proximity to everything kind of coming together there. Here's the other picture, another picture, just a reminder of the, the existing condition with those planners in the middle. This rendering shows a little bit, the, the increased size of this median, final design on what this will look like to accommodate trucks and what that shape looks like, and to make sure we don't get the left turn through here as well. We're going to continue to work to expand that, to make it the appropriate size of the work for, for the space. But the idea is to increase the size of that refuge area and, and the obstacle on either side of it to increase pedestrian safety there as well. And then if I go to the aerial, each of these crosswalks, we've reduced those crossing distances by, they're still in the same location, but we're increasing that pedestrian bumpout to, to not open this right turn lane here until after you've already crossed that, that area. So this is a much shorter crossing distance, and you'll see that's the same on each of the four locations, each of the four crosswalks. This one in the aerial is still wide, we've got the, this area, and so this has been updated since we've done this rendering even, to account for the, the change in parking there. So did that help clarify the ways we're doing it? From a, from a, to the point of what this looks like, we do have this shown as the relatively standard, and the options of the, the standard crosswalks would be just the parallel lines, you know, the two parallel lines, one on either side. We do have the ladder style that's in there now. There are other ways, whether that be color or, or other materials, to increase the visibility. They all come with their own maintenance challenges and those things as well. And so as we work through detailed design, that kind of feedback on, let's make sure we're enhancing the visibility of those pedestrians, we'll work with the city engineering staff and the city review team to make sure we get to that optimal solution.
Mr. Pierce?
Right, right. And the brick pavers have become uneven, causing a trip hazard, and it's one of the reasons we're looking at this project. How do we not end up in that same situation?
Just, standard, I'm sure be able to talk to the existing construction better than that, but in some of my initial pictures, right, we talked about, is this the type of brick here that you're talking about, that, that hazard here where it's? Hazard here where it's kind of fell below the curb, and just the general unevenness of some of these other areas?
Yeah.
Yeah. So in these general fields, we would use the same design that, that I, again, heard Pod Design share with you all two weeks ago, when they were sharing, I think it was, yeah, two weeks ago, when they were sharing the Proudly Plaza concept of that concrete base with a inlay, and then the, the brick really sits on top of that. And so that more robust system, make sure that we hold that, those pavers flush within the field, you know, within themselves. And then some of the details on how that concrete, that underlayment is attached to the existing curb, right, the way we are able to make sure that those things remain together. Similar details are used now when you put sidewalk right at the back of the curb, that it's not a completely independent system. It's, it's some of the ways that we anticipate the longevity of this will be increased.
Okay.
And then one other question. It looks like in here Proudly Plaza is included in this bid, or this, not bid, but projection of cost. And from what I'm seeing, there's no, we don't have to issue a bond or anything like that, this is paid from cash?
We're not anticipating any kind of bond financing.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Phillips?
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Twist?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Seaver, if you come to the microphone.
First, I do have a couple of comments. Number one, as you'll recall, in April of 2024, there was a meeting at Redmond's, and a number of issues came out of that meeting, and I'm glad to see that they're incorporated. Primarily, my recollection was that we wanted one lane around the roundabout, that we got rid of the lane in front of Winans, excuse me, and that we postponed the construction to allow some time from the prior construction project that we're going. So I appreciate you doing those things. I would be supportive of it. The only issue that I'm kind of weighing on my mind is with the Proudly Plaza discussion and the sort of tables that we talked about, I'm not really sold on the permanent seating areas that you talked about. I do think that they would be subject to vandalism and maybe some skateboarding and other issues, but I, I'm not opposed to, I just want to know more information on them. So that's where I would stand right now.
Mr. Schilling?
Yeah, I'd like to concur with Mr. Seaver on the changes that you did make in the original plans, have incorporated a lot of what our community has told us that they wanted, and I, you know, that is good. If we go back to the picture of the square with the bollards, and, and I tried to count those, and I, I counted 20 in, in one section. If that, if you can go back that, yeah, so you add all those up, you got at least 20. And my first question, I don't ever remember anybody that is parking, that parked facing the square, went over the curb, over that grass area, then into the traffic lane. I, we haven't had, you know, so I'm not sure, and, and the other part of it is, I think is our square is fairly well-lighted as it exists today. And so I'm wondering, I mean, we're talking if it's, if it's 20, 20 bollards a, a section of the square, that's 80 bollards, and we're looking at a cost of 800 and, 800 and some thousand dollars. Bollards, 800 and, 847 dollars, 847,000 dollars in, in ballot cost. And I'm wondering, look, if we got rid of 80 of these things, I mean, that would, I mean, we're looking away, this thing, this, the cost on this thing is staggering to me.
Mr. Schilling? The, the baller, bollards that are in the front are temporary bollards, they serve as storage. Those are not necessarily safety features, they'll be safety-rated, but they were not put there specifically for people, you know, jumping the curb and go and?
Okay, well, I want to, I want to talk about that part, too.
But, the idea is, is that, you know, you've got a lot of different, we, we have different configurations depending on the festival, depending on the concert, as to which quads are closed, if the whole square is closed, you know, there's, there's all kinds of different ways. And so the cost that you're talking about is the cost of not just bollards, and there would be plenty of bollards, it's also, you know, creating the, the holes, whatever they're called.
Foundation.
Sleeves, sleeves.
Yeah, the hole, yeah, okay.
Okay, so I understand, I understand. That are, that are sunk.
But if you don't have a baller, you don't have a hole.
Well, okay, except.
My, my question here is, a couple of things on ideas, is that, on ideas, is that in order to move these temporary bollards from their position where they are right now in the picture to say if we wanted to block off this particular quadrant, those things you just can't pull out of the ground, right? You have to have a front-end loader or some piece of machinery to lift these out of the hole because of the weight.
Sure. Yeah, they're, they're pretty heavy, yeah. It's steer or something.
So, and to get a piece of equipment like that downtown, we have to have a trailer.
Which we already have.
Okay. So why not take, build some cradles for these bollards, these temporary bollards, put them on the trailer, and that way you can, when you bring the, use that trailer to transport not only the bollards to downtown, but you also then use that trailer to transport the, the machinery to get the bollards out of the, you know, to get the bollards, move them and get them into the holes where they belong. That, that's one idea. The other, the other thing I, I, but again, I'm looking at even, even the ones that are so, so permanent, I mean, you still got, you got a half, you got 12 or 14 along the backside of that thing, and I'm, you know, I'm not sure we need all those. I mean, we, we talked about this in 2024, and I'm, you know, I'm, number one, they're not, you know, the ones we were, we were looking at close up were stainless steel, and I'm thinking, you know, that's not, really doesn't match the, the architectural features of the rest of the square. So I think we, we have to take a look at, look at, number one, the quantity that we want, if we want any. And then the second area is, is having a, a, instead of having these other temporary bollards stored downtown, put them on a trailer, make a, a cradle for them, and they, they can, we bring them in when we need them type of thing. And the other thing I noticed is that last year when I attended Pelotania in Columbus, you know, where you have literally thousands of people in the downtown area, they had these claw-like features, claw-like things that they put on. these claw-like features, claw-like things that they put on in the street. And the idea is that when a, when a, if a car hit it, the thing would dig into the asphalt. And again, those are, they were placed by, by some sort of a front end loader or something, and then at the end of the day, they were just picked up and moved to the storage off site. And I'm wondering, the cost comparison is something like that? Evidently that works because Columbus is using them, and I've seen them, I think I've seen them in a couple of other places. But it's something like that versus having all these posts sitting in the ground in downtown Troy. I just, to me, I just, I'm just looking at it saying, you know, man, I don't, that to me is like a huge, you know, if you're talking about, it's still 847,000 dollars, that's for the bollards and holes and everything else you need, okay, that's fine, that's, that's still, you know, a lot of money.
I have another question before you answer his. So if we're closing off this quadrant, are you taking these temporary ones out and moving them over here? We have additional ones.
You will have additional ones. We'll have some stored here. We'll have some stored here. So as I mentioned at the beginning of the, the conversation, you know, the idea is if you don't want bollards, then, then that's just a safety feature that you're not going to have. You can't do half and not, not all. So the bollard plan, the bollard plan includes a lot more bollard holes that may or may not be filled, but not all the bollards are stored on site, okay? We, as part of the streetscape. Originally, back when KZF was, was showing us what, you know, some different options, pretty much all of the bollards were incorporated as part of the, the streetscape design. And council very clearly said, you know, we really don't want to see this many bollards, to your point. This is a scaled down version. We can't store 150 or whatever bollards we're talking about to, to, you know, to have enough bollards to really be able to block off whenever, and be safe if we had to do the whole downtown. So some of those we already plan on being able to store offsite. Some of them though, we, we challenged LJB's team to find some plan that incorporated some of the bollards, but not nearly all of them, into the, the design plans here. And this is what you see.
So you're saying that if we need 150 bollards to close down the square, that comes out to 37 in intersection. Is that right? If you have, if you have, if you said we need 150 bollards to close down the square completely for like the strawberry festival or something of that sort, then you need 37 per intersection. So when we look at our street, we'll have 37 bollards across the, across the street.
It's going to vary by width of, you know, width of the street and width of the section of the street, but the spacing between bollards has to be five, no more than five feet on center. That's a technical engineering term.
So we're talking 37, we're talking 150 divided by four, because we have four entrances to the square.
Okay.
So yes, 37, that's 37 of.
That's if you're going to block off the square. I mean, you know, you could go back to Cherry Street, you could be back to, you could be back to Plum Street.
When we do the, the strawberry festival, we block off the streets coming into the square.
Yes. As, yeah, as well as walnut, cherry. We also, depending on the year and how the routing happens, we might block off half of Plum Street. And, and the other thing that you asked about were those crash-rated berms.
Well, they're like a claw.
Well, they're, they're more than a claw. They're, they're, they're big barricades. I mean, they are crash, crash-rated barricades. I know what you're talking about.
Right.
They do have a claw on the front. They do dig in, which of course means asphalt replacement, but also they're, they're the really big ones that you're talking about, when a car hits it, the car actually stops and flips over. That's how, I mean, the barricade's not going anywhere.
Right.
Those barricades to just block, you know, in the same way as we would use the bollards would be incredibly expensive and I bet you would be a lot more than the 800,000 dollars.
So, but again, I just think we need to really, like I say, the lit ones, I'm, like I say, I'm not sure we need those, and the other ones, like I say, it's, you know, as you say, it's, it sounds like an awful lot, but.
Yeah, and, and as far as the stainless steel, it, they're not, they're not going to be stainless steel. We're working on different options.
We'll paint it black.
Blue.
Blue.
Thank you, blue.
Don't go there.
Okay, that's it. Thank you so much.
Okay. I just got general questions, as more to our administration.
How much feedback have we gotten from the public from our Proudly Plaza meeting?
Very little. I think we got one today from somebody that was concerned about the archway on Proudly Plaza, which is two weeks later. And then I think there, somebody was confused about the water feature going into the fountain area, which is, you know, the roundabout fountain area, and that is not going to happen, so we're not concerned about that one. I don't know that we've gotten any other feedback on that.
Are we still accepting comments and input for Proudly or?
Well, we, we are to a degree. I mean, we've got the general concept, we've got, you know, we, well, we got comment immediately afterwards from some, from somebody who's well informed and is a downtown stakeholder that, let's see, they want to make sure that there was uplighting, wanted to make sure there were lighting options on Proudly Plaza, wanted to make sure that there was at least conduit, or, you know, if we could incorporate some additional sound speakers in, that are controllable in Proudly Plaza, you know, wanted to confirm that we were looking at irrigation. So, you know, very positive, proactive.
So in other words, if you want to make comments, get them in. Right. Mr. Whitten?
Yeah, Mrs. Rhodes, I have a question to be directed for you, I suppose. I know you wouldn't do it in detail at the meeting in the Bravo Room last April or May, but can you go and talk to us about the water infrastructure and kind of what we're looking to do here and some of the, holding back some of the businesses downtown in regard to the, in regard to the, you know, the structural part of what we want to do downtown?
Yeah, so the water infrastructure, the water, the pipelines are pretty old, which way am I going, just to see an overview. So the pipelines are pretty old, so honestly, what we were planning on doing was replacing the water mains to, in the extent of the project. So we're starting at Cherry Street, we're going to Mulberry Street and north and south from Market to South Market. Right now, the, literally the water main like makes a cross underneath the, underneath the fountain, you know, and so replacing that, even the feed to that. And then that's why we started to talk about the revolving loan fund and having the possibility of the business property owners to at least get the water line to their property, and then the city or the part of this project would be doing the restoration, the asphalt, the sidewalk, you know, as a part of the project, which is probably a significant cost of that running of that line to each of the property owners.
Okay. That was it for quick question. Some of the pipes in that area are over 100 years old at this point.
Yes, yes, sorry, they are over 100 years old, yes. The city started here, right? So this has always been downtown, and so this is, some of our oldest valves, they're numbered, you know, I think, I think there's a 10 or a maybe even a lower, so we kind of numbered them sequentially. So there's some pretty old valves, and we actually experienced, if you remember a couple years ago, Bakehouse Fred's, we were operating a valve to Bakehouse, it broke, we had to do that repair, Bakehouse was out of water. They also have a very small line feeding that, that quadrant. So that's the other thing we're doing, is increasing. Is increasing the size to all the quadrants, to all the property, properties that are in those quadrants that may not really have access to larger lines to serve them for sprinkler systems.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Jill, I got one question. When they, when they mentioned the grates and the. I believe East Main Street was the last section we did on the grates and everything with K's and Mojo.
Yep.
Do you anticipate redoing that or they need to be redone or?
We will be redoing it to match the remaining streetscape, unfortunately, but we will not be assessing them.
Okay.
Right now, like just as an example on East Main, there aren't bump outs, there's safety bump outs for shorter crosswalks.
Mayor, do you have any comments before we go to the public? All righty. We will go to the public. Come on up, name and address, please. Is that what you wanted? Is that what you wanted?
Kelly Snyder, I'm the director of the Troy Rec, 11 North Market Street. I am curious about the assessments that will occur for the sidewalk placement. When would we be assessed and when would we know the cost kind of for budgeting purposes?
So that would be part of the bidding process?
Yeah.
And we would run it the way we run the assessment process by state law?
So essentially, once we get to the point that we've done enough design that we know that, like we have a good estimate of the cost of plain concrete as well as the area, which we'll know that here shortly, we'll put together a package for each of the property owners. So you'll kind of know an estimated assessment before we go off the bid.
Okay.
And then once the bid comes in, we normally do the, we do the work and then we come back. So at that point, like when we give you an estimated assessment, you'll be able, because the city will be performing the work, you'll be able to appeal it with an AEB. There's an AEB, which is an assessment equalization board. And so it's just kind of stating your case, like everybody kind of comes forth with different cases, like for example, East Main, one of the things that they kind of came to us about was back in 14 or 15 was, hey, we shouldn't have to pay for this upgraded sidewalk, you know? So that was a decision that was made back then. Yes, the assessment equalization board said, we concur with that, like you shouldn't have to pay for that. So that's one of the things we brought forward to this, to this project for you guys, saying you're only paying for plain sidewalks. And then to get back on, so it'll be constructed and then you would have, you would get a bill after the project was complete and you have the ability to pay it then or to put it on your taxes. And it's, it's only a tax bill for five years, 10 payments, and it's just equal payment.
Okay. So that would be like 20, 27?
Seven at the earliest, I would think. The earliest, honestly, would be probably 20, 28.
Okay.
Because we would wait for construction to be done.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, awesome. And then the pavers, I also had the same question about the trip hazard, because I know just in front of the rec, there's all kinds of them that are bumped out. So I'm glad to hear that there's a way to make that not happen.
And also I would just say to keep in mind that the sidewalk that's out there right now is 30 years old, right? So it has had a lot of wear and tear, it's had a lot of salt, right? Because if you're going to salt anything, we're salting the downtown, and business owners and property owners are salting the downtown more, so you're seeing more deterioration. But, yeah, so being 30 years old, something to keep in mind.
Okay, great. And then I just have one more comment to Mr. Schilling's comment about the skateboarders, and I just would encourage you to put some money towards the new skate park, and then you won't have as much problems with them skating downtown. I work with those kids every day. If you give them a place, they won't tear up your downtown. So, thank you.
Good evening, Amy with Troy Main Street. Love all of this, this is my first time getting to see it. A couple of things that I wanted to double check that we're still looking into as we're moving forward is we have a sound system in the downtown area. We're maxed out right now, so we know that that infrastructure will have to be improved. And then while we're doing that, if there's maybe a way that we can bring the sound down to the level of the sidewalk rather than up in the apartments where people are living. And then of course, electric capacity upgrades for festivals, events, et cetera, if people are bringing food trucks down, just making sure we have that capacity. Pedestrian safety efforts, that does require a really strong and continuous marketing campaign by the city and other stakeholders, just to share with them and bring awareness of the fact that we want a walkable downtown. If people get out of their cars, then they're shopping and dining in our downtown rather than just driving through. And then, I don't know if it was intentional or not, but the design mimics the city branding, which is curating that fascinating placemaking effort, and I love that, with all the circles and everything, and putting that into the quadrants as well, because pretty matters whether we like it or not. Placemaking efforts have people flocking to well-curated, curated communities that create experiences in our everyday living, and those are the people who are dining and shopping in our downtown. So I love everything about it, and I hope we kind of keep some of that design, as well as the seating areas that are built in. Just outside today, there wasn't quite enough seating out for the amount of people that wanted to have lunch outside. So, that's it, thank you.
Mrs. Roder.
Hey, Chuck, stop tripping people.
Kathy Roder with the Troy Chamber and Troy Strawberry Festival. First, I also wanted to say thank you for incorporating the changes from the feedback that was at the previous two meetings. And then I echo what Amy just said, I think it looks really great. My one thing I did want to mention with the bollards, we have literally been talking with the city from the strawberry festival for 12 years about how can we get bollards in the downtown, how can we make this safer? I also was on the Troy Main Street Board when we talked about the quadrant that incorporates Proudly Plaza, and how can we make sure that that is safe, the sawhorse barricades we're putting out are not. So I really applaud that. And then I also just wanted to ask about an electrical upgrade. Are there electrical upgrades? I only heard maintain, because I am concerned, because as we continue to have food trucks, they use more electricity, and currently we don't allow generators, so seeing if we can do that too.
Yeah, we'll, we'll continue to look into it. I've been, we've been coordinating with Daryl, I mean, he is involved in this design, so we're continuing to look into it to make sure that we are expanding what we have there.
That would be Daryl, our electrical foreman.
Sorry.
Just summarize. Guy, we've been talking to Daryl.
Daryl.
We don't know who he is, but.
Hi, my name is Aubrey Brandon. I live at 929 Marble Avenue in Pickla, actually. However, I spend a lot of my time in downtown Troy and have, ever since I was a little kid, like spending my time here, shopping in the downtown businesses, getting out whenever I can. I do have some concerns though about this project, aside from the many great things that I think it'll bring to downtown, which I'm excited to see. But like many folks have stated, the pavers is kind of an issue that I'm concerned about for different reasons, I think, most folks in this room. You can see on the front of my chair, these little wheels here, they're called casters, and they get stuck very easily in brick pavers, no matter how level they are, no matter how supported they are. Anytime that those pavers get loose, it's a tripping hazard for me. These wheels get knocked backwards and it's very expensive for me to fix them, and I can't get around anymore. I'm a student at Ohio State, so I'm used to these kinds of terrains all the time. However, because of that, I'm always getting tripped up. So from personal experience, I would ask to maybe reconsider the different kinds of paving materials that we're using and maybe opt for a stained concrete that we're using with the rest of the pavement outside of these brick paved areas. We could have the difference in color, keep the aesthetic changes, but we could still promote more accessibility for folks with mobility aids, folks that are elderly or may have difficulty getting around on their feet, younger kids, adults, folks using strollers, anybody with delivery carts, anybody really traversing around that might trip, this could potentially eliminate it, I think. Some other issues that I could foresee relating specifically to accessibility would be the kiosks downtown. I think these are a great, a great idea that we can implement. In my time in Columbus, when I'm there learning, they're all around town and they are great ways of getting out information. My concern would be for folks that are blind or low vision or can't see very well, if maybe these kiosks could have a feature where they could read out what is being displayed. This could also be another opportunity for local media, for like festivals, music, things like that, different kinds of media that would be presented audibly, you could do here on these kiosks. So that would be an accessibility thing and also a marketing thing. Some other issues that we've kind of discussed here tonight are the RFB signs, kind of from what I am seeing here, a little bit of contention in how well they would be able to work. I would maybe ask that you consider looking at Lane Avenue on High Street, the north border of the Ohio State campus, and I would argue that has about doubled the amount of vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic, and folks are able to cross through this area with these RFB signs quite safely for the most part. Folks are slowing down, they are using them to keeping students safe. I think that might be something we could implement here in Troy, if these curb cutouts, these curb bump outs aren't doing enough already. The other things though, aside from the suggestions I'd like to make, I think that the inclusion of parking, even though it's not required by the ADA, going a step above and beyond to include some of these things, I think, would be a benefit to everybody in Troy and the local communities that like to access downtown Troy. A lot of these things, whether. Um, a lot of these things, whether they may be considered ADA compliant, I would like to kind of remind you that the ADA was passed in 1990. We have come quite a long ways in how we treat people with disabilities, the types of technology that we're using, things that we're seeing, um, in our design plans like this. I don't think that should really be the metric that we're going against. I know that this is the law, this is the one thing that we can look towards as a metric, but what if we could just look a little bit beyond that? Doing a little bit more, doing a little bit better and seeing Troy as kind of this beacon to other communities around us that says, well, if they're implementing this level of accessibility, we can do that too. And I think Troy could be a great place to start that. So just ask you to take those into consideration, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Andrea Cook, 1336 Maple Crest Drive. I am wondering about, um, the amount of green space. Um, I, I love seeing the trees and the large planters and everything downtown, but what I hear from other people and what I really enjoy myself is shade downtown. I'm wondering if, I know the trees are concentrated in the corners, if they could be spaced out a little bit more? Um, you know, we have the four trees in each of the parking areas. I don't know if on the, if it's good with traffic or not, but on the bump outs near the sidewalks possibly, to have something a little bit bigger for people or over on the Proudly Plaza side, to have just more enjoyable for people. It's aesthetically pleasing, but it's also less heat on the, on the concrete everywhere as well.
So we will be, uh, the plan is, um, and, uh, Dan and Kevin, you can jump in.
We will be replacing the trees, um, on the roads, uh, along the, the curb lines of the roads. Um, we do have, uh, a number of trees that are in each of the quads and, and we took shade, uh, in, you know, in, we had that in mind. And so, um, I think, I think we're pretty much replacing all of the trees out there. They just might be positioned a little bit and they'd be a different sty, or a different species of tree.
We'll let Mr. Graykey address that.
Yeah, Mr. Graykey.
I can go ahead and touch on that. We did, we did, um, tasked the design team, we counted tree for tree and do have them spaced out throughout the quadrants as well as a block in each direction. So we definitely wanted to take that in consideration. And we actually did add into the corners, uh, in the common areas, in the plaza spaces, additional trees for a shade canopy. Granted, right in the beginning, of course, we have to wait for maturity and get the trees to that point, uh, but we will get there and that was definitely designed into this for sure.
And then incorporate, I, with them being close to the buildings, the foundations of the buildings and all the infrastructure underneath.
Yeah, so that was, uh, when we met, uh, with the team Thursday, that was my question, was spacing off of the buildings and, and how much space was there as well as, uh, species selection? So that's a key po, uh, component of it, is that we're putting the proper tree in each of those spaces that, that, um, at maturity, they're gonna have enough room to, to grow and not interfere with the buildings and the foundations, for sure.
Very long term, 15 years.
Absolutely, yes.
We'll have to do this again in Brooklyn.
Correct, absolutely, yep.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Hi, uh, Matt Breen, 1435 Edinburgh Drive. I was just wondering, all the discussion about the signs and pedestrian safety, how many pedestrian vehicle incidents have we had in the downtown square in the past five years?
Two or three, I think. And that was, uh, yeah, two of them, uh, was, uh, uh, like younger, younger pedestrians that, uh, got a little too eager.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Does that include the pop, the number of pops that we've been crashing into?
That's a different story, that's, uh, yeah.
It's not a pedestrian incident.
We need to slow them down.
Anyone else? Council members, any other questions?
So we are looking for, so, um, the only thing that you might see in the short term um, is with the additional work on Proudly Plaza and the integration that needs to be done there as well as the, um, the, the additional work that, um, you know, we're looking into with, uh, adding the possibility of, uh, service lines for the sprinklers. Uh, there may, we may come back to you for an adjustment on the, the design.
The design fees. Um, you know, the, uh, uh, we'll, we'll take all of the, uh, comments here today, uh, build them into, uh, um, uh, the final, final design before you.
West.
And bring that back to you. Uh, but in the meantime, we're not asking for anything, you know, next, next week or anything, anytime really soon.
Anything else from us?
I, did we?
One last time, anybody got any other follow-up questions?
Dan, you guys get what you needed?
She's got my round.
Just reiterate, email it again.
Sorry, I have more of a question this time. Um, considering some of the businesses downtown, I'm wondering if any of these businesses would be, um, including ramps, um, since this is in the scope of what we're doing here, if any of these businesses would have ramps being brought up to their doors? I know that a lot of these buildings are very old, again, before the ADA, and I cannot get into most of them, unfortunately. So would this be included for actually accessing these businesses rather than just the spaces around them?
Sure.
So we're not gonna be by ADA to not, in order to not put, my understanding, in order to not put, um, handrails, you can only have a max of a certain width. So probably the entrances are not gonna change a lot because if we start flipping sidewalks, we need handrails. And it's, then once you get into the best field, that kind of entrance, that kind of the building. And so we're not gonna go in and make modifications to the building and they're grandfathered in and so they go too. So we understand that it may not necessarily improve. We will improve what we can, but it'll probably be pretty close to what it is now, unfortunately.
Thinking about the ADA, the rising around the areas of 12 to 1, and most of these entrances are only about six inches. So I don't think that would necessarily require handrails. So I guess that's kind of where my question is.
Well, we worked, I worked through this, uh, at East Main and we'll, I'll talk to the engineers about it again. I was working with a different engineering firm on East Main and I was saying, hey, if we can get all of these bricks, like, if we can get rid of all these steps, I would think when we were getting it, and then they're like, no, ADA. And so like, because of the rise and the run and then you need a certain width of sidewalk that maybe has very little, little. So it, it came into this whole equation and, um, they did what they could, but it wasn't what I was thinking. And it was all related to ADA, it was my understanding. Okay, so we'll look into it and we'll do what we can. Uh, but we won't be entering into the buildings themselves. Okay, thank you.
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Has the cost of cement been considered as opposed to paper bricks uh, to make it more ADA accessible and easier for walkers and canes and strollers and so forth?
The cost assessments that have been prepared so far have been to this schematic design level. So the short answer is no. Not to, like, from a pedestrian access route, you know, maintaining a certain pattern or anything else. Um, the, the preliminary cost assessments that we've done now have really just been on that concept, collecting feedback from, for tonight and for the comments that may be submitted in the next couple of days or weeks. Uh, and then as we move into the detailed design, we would then incorporate those things into any new updates, so.
But one of our follow-ups will be based on tonight's conversation. You know, what other kind of options might there be? Uh, I know there was some concern about having stamped concrete all over uh, just because of the, the way it wears so differently. Um, but there may be some options that, that we can look at to help address Aubrey's, uh, concerns.
Historically, is, is, is the concrete more expensive than the pavers in your projects?
Typically, it would not. A lot of it depends on the application of the concrete, uh, you know, standard crew finished. Standard crew finished concrete is much less expensive than pavers. Uh, there's a paver system that Dan explains. Uh, it, it has a concrete subbase, it has a two-minute setting bed and then a tack coat, the pavers are laid in there and they're, they're not going anywhere. Um, so that is a, a more expensive system. Uh, we would find it to be much more durable and you're, you're not worrying about the settlement and the heaving or, you know, the, the shifting of those pavers.
Have we, do you have examples of where it's been done in other cities that you can provide, like here's something that's five years down the road and they're still?
Yeah, uh, yeah, there's plenty of, of opportunities, examples there.
I think it might just help people see. I went to Oxford, Ohio, where it was all brick and everything, one is uneven, so. That's what I'm used to.
Yeah, Mr. Pierce.
That system is different, this system is different than that.
Are there any studies to show that the pavers that we're looking at here are any easier to roll over than the stamped concrete that we already have?
I, I know they're all ADA compliant, though to what level? So, yeah, I'm sure there's plenty of studies available that, you know, each manufacturer provides that we would be able to provide that information.
I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Anything else? Then we are adjourned. Thank you for cutting, thanks for the input, the input. Thank you for the changes you've made and any future changes that you might make.